It's 5:30 and this is the monthly meeting of the SVU ESB. Scott Murphy, acting as chair. Two, I would entertain a motion to modify the agenda in two ways, please. First, we need to add the three nomination forms to the consent agenda. These are for the, and I'll read them aloud. Three nomination forms, each for the school, the campus safety officers. Bo Alexander, Francisco Peña, Randy Banks, were the three being nominated to be hired for those roles. So I'd like, first of all, I'll entertain a motion to add those three, those three nomination forms to the consent agenda, please. Thank you, Scott. A second from Sandy. Any discussion on this? Are you and all those in favor of adding those to the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. That's added. The other modification, this doesn't, I'll just say this as a point of information, we're not adding anything. But we're going to postpone a discussion of the dress code to the next meeting. That's under policy, so that's seven B. So, any other proposed modifications to the agenda? Okay, so let's move on to the agenda. So, agenda item one is the Pledge of Allegiance. People so choose that would invite them to stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which Sam is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, item two, I'm sorry, agenda item two is the consent agenda, which was affixed to the agenda proper. Number two. So it is? Thank you. See one? Agenda. I'm so excited about this consent agenda.
Well, you're right. They modified.
I do not see any public here.
Okay.
I'm public.
Mary Ellen. That's my job to put that. I thought it was pretty obvious.
Public, otherwise known as Mary Ellen Monley, from Bennington Cares. And I just said three things. One of them is that in the next two weeks, various members of Bennington Cares are meeting with the principal at Molly Stark and the principal at Bennington Cares. Said that we can talk together about what are some of the best ways for Bennington Cares to work with school on some of the things that are their priorities and our skills. So that's, that's exciting. And both principals are amazingly enthusiastic and welcoming about putting that.
Quick question, is it possible that you went to Bennington Elementary when you said going to Bennington, the principal of Bennington Cares?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm the principal of Bennington Elementary.
Okay.
Yes.
In addition to Molly Stark?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one of already been working at Bennington.
Thank you. If one of our goals is to expand students, is to expand Molly Stark. So thank you. The other piece is, is the item on the agenda about school choice, is that the same as the project that's going on with the Northeast School Development?
No, it is not.
It's different.
Different.
Then, thanks for that clarification and wondering if there's any possibility for community participation in the project that is being done by Northeast School Development. We've noticed that there are many groups that are going to participate and hear about the process. And then looking at some of the reports from that group, they don't tend to involve the community. We've noticed in terms of who has been actively involved. And we would like to ask you to seriously consider what might be an appropriate time and way for the community to participate, even at the early stage in the important discussions and decisions that that group is working on, on the school district's behalf. The other piece is looking at the budget report. It's massive. We've learned, a couple of us in Bennington Cares, how to read it. You know, it's done by school and categories and all that. And again, I know it's asking for something that maybe isn't available yet, but in time. Do you think it would be possible to have a budget kind of summary, maybe every quarter or at least maybe twice a year? And what, what we're thinking about in terms of that is, let me get to my notes here. What we're thinking is just, we know all the line items, but then there's the sort of groups, right, of the things that, the categories under which all the line items come. Would it be possible to just see a kind of chart that showed each of those major categories? And then the schools across maybe the top, the elementary schools, so that we could compare what the budget was for the year and where things are in terms of expenditures to date. This, that kind of a simple summary would be very helpful to us community members who are willing and interested in staying up to, up to speed on what's going on. Is our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, my favorite agenda, the consent agenda. So it's, it's affixed to the agenda proper. We've added the three nomination forms. So really, it's just total there, it's the four nomination forms. One thing I would like to note that the minutes for October 10th reflected Mary Ellen was present. She was not present at that particular meeting. So that, so I would entertain a motion to modify the minutes to reflect that fact, please. Thank you.
Sandy.
Thank you very much. So we have first and second, any discussion in modifying the minutes?
Do you have to agree?
Are you and all those in favor of modifying the minutes to remove Mary Ellen as being marked as present, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good, so that passes. And that just leaves the four, the three nominations and one resignation. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified, please. Thanks. Thank you very much. So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Are you and all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? That passes. Great. So that brings us to agenda item four, which is finance. Director Gordon is here. So first, I, let me, the treasurer's report, I believe was posted, I believe I saw that. Yeah, so that's, that's been there. And then we also have this artist in the school grant that's been received. It's going to be $4,000, which is great. And Director Gordon, is there anything you'd like to share about the artist in schools grants?
Just doing well on the finance of women's plan to happen. So, the check has been received, so we're ready for deposit, but we can't set up.
So since we do need to accept it formally, I would entertain a motion to do that. Very good.
I have a second.
All right.
You've got two seconds.
I feel like we don't even need to say a vote at this point. So all those, any discussion about accepting the artist in schools grants? Is this the same program they did a couple of years ago? Thank you.
I don't remember if the banner is exactly the same.
Getting a thumbs up on this. Okay. Thank you. You know, that's a great program, so. Great. So any, as we have our first, we have our second. Any further discussion? Are you and all those in favor of accepting the grant, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes.
While we're on finance and we have Director Gordon here, two things, you would ask the last meeting to brief for you about how state funding works and budgets, since we have so many new board members.
I don't know if it could be brief, but yeah.
All right. Well, the other is, it could be in more detail, the other thing that we'd like to set while we have Renate here is a date for your first budget.
Great. Great. You know, two, so for those of you who haven't sat on a school board for, the ways in which, the ways in which educational funding occurs in Vermont is nutty. It's, it's crazy. I've heard, I've heard Director Gordon give a talk, I don't know, 14 or 15 times, and I'm still amazed at that many. But it's, it's still very puzzling. I did see recently that the Vermont School Board Association also has a webinar out now about how to do that, which is great.
We haven't previewed, Director Gordon and I were on a webinar today with Superintendent Association, School Board Association, and AOE on Act 127. So if you think funding, if you thought you understood it. So, but during that seminar, they did out their webinar on budget, but we debated mentioning it to you tonight because neither one of us had previewed it.
Okay. So I, I'm not watching it either. If, if members of this board have not seen that email, please let me know and I will forward it to them. Maybe we can, each of us, if we have, if we have the interest in learning more about the school funding piece, we can watch that webinar on our own time and then maybe direct questions to Director Gordon individually if needed. But, so to the point of scheduling our budget meetings. Director Gordon, in terms of a timeframe, what are your thoughts about when we should start meetings for the budget?
We will be receiving, or we should be receiving, the December 1st letter from the task commissioner, December 1st. So that is one of the pieces that's always, you know, we, essentially tells us what they're predicting or what they're saying that the Ed Fund can support in terms of the property yield. We oftentimes look at the bottom line of what the budget increases, and I have tried to redirect folks to we really need to look at what our demand is on the Ed Funds or our general state support grant. That, then you get into the complications of how many other factors come into it and what we all know is what's been in the past is changing this year with Act 127. So I would say soon after December 1st, as soon as everybody's schedules work out. And I know that negotiations going on too, so.
Yeah. So, yeah, so negotiations, I think we just set one up for the, for December 4th, which is the first Monday in December. So are you, are you imagining that the first, or maybe the first two budget meetings will be just sort of like a snapshot of what is being asked? More of an update than really kind of a planning session? Is that the idea?
I will definitely give you what has been asked and try to give you as much additional information as I can at that time.
Okay.
If we have the new long, on-term weighted ADM, which is replacing equalized pupils. If we have that, we can kind of start drilling down. But we typically won't have the common level of appraisal letters from the Department of Property Evaluation until mid to late December. So we'll have, I can give you what I have at that time and it'll just continue to evolve as the weeks go by.
Okay. Can you just clarify with ADMs, please?
Average daily membership, which is, in other terms, it's the false census. It's the count of students that are attending our schools by district, by town. And it's from the 11th to the 30th day of school. And it's, it's being used for so many things now. It's by our census block grant to support. Changed in Act 173 with special education funding. They're now changing the weighting. So ADM was part of the equalized pupil calculations, but it's changing now with different weights and so on.
Please, can you just clarify from the 11th to the 30th day?
Of school.
So it's moved from being counted on the 11th day to the 30th day, or is it?
That is the timeframe and that we get to count.
And is it an average over that time, or do you pick a date within that range?
We're counting every single day. So if it was to enroll on the 15th day, they would, we basically get 75% of that count for that year.
Got it.
And that's how critical that 20-day window is, that rides on it.
Wow.
So our summer meeting would fall on the 12th. We, we meet at 5:30. If, if we were to meet at 5 and then kind of schedule this regular board meeting to begin earlier than 12.
Because you start running into holiday weeks for Jewish families event.
Okay. Yeah, that's important also to consider. Thank you.
Typically, if we get to this time of year, we suspend a lot of the other agenda items towards just essential and concern in budget, which is probably what's going to happen at the ESU meeting, by the way, next week, so.
So how about then a meeting at 5:30 on Tuesday the 5th? That's a question both from a supervisor reunion perspective in terms of scheduling and for each of our members as well.
So it depends if we are going to that conference.
I don't think I can.
Yeah.
I just don't have time.
And that's the fourth and fifth day when it works out for principals, I mean, superintendents and business managers up at, like more on finance, but I don't see how either one of us are going to be able to go. It's kind of a last minute announcement on a state, so.
Seems like terrible timing too. Everybody is dealing with budgets now.
It was rescheduled from October and they knew that the timing wasn't ideal, but they said if, if the turnout was good, they would try to revisit it again and maybe try to do something similar earlier on.
As long as you're not going to go, then the 5th would work.
So 5:30 on December 5th?
Thank you. And, and for those who don't like, why we're going to hijack most of next week's ESU meeting is because their budget needs to be set first before we can finalize individual school district budgets, because you need both the assessments going to be from the ESU.
Superintendent Colton, can you just remind me, please, what are the requirements for physical, physical attendance at these meetings?
One person in the room. We announce a local, physical location, someone has to be here to, the public doesn't have to be the board, it can be me. Everyone else can attend promptly. And that's, that predates COVID. That, that's always been Vermont's stature because of distances. We just have a much better ability to have people join, like trying from now because of Zoom as opposed to phone calling into a meeting.
Okay, great. So I just, folks keep that in mind and attend online, attend in person. I'll leave it up to everyone's discretion, but it's certainly fine as, as we're adding more and more meetings a month compared to this having here. Folks just need to do it remotely and that's AOK.
So just for clarification purposes, December 5th would be remote?
There's that option, yeah.
Yeah, the option.
Okay.
Yeah.
So did you want to do a pre-like workshop, or do you want me to just plan on kind of giving you the overview at 5:30? Just so I know how to.
Why don't, why don't we stick with just, just the numbers on at 5:30? Folks can watch the BSBA webinar prior to that. If they have individual questions, I'll ask if they reach out to you directly. That works. And if anyone needs that, that link from the Vermont School Board Association, please just let me know. Okay. Do you, Director Gordon, would you like to schedule another meeting for December? Or is that not necessary?
Could use your 12 meeting, so budget meeting with consent agenda.
Okay. I like that. Okay. Let's, let's plan for that then. Great. Any other matters pertaining to the finance agenda later?
I have a question for Director Gordon, and this could be an old, something from the check register, could be something old that I just was curious about. It's the heavy placement and the drainage repair went together. There's one thing I can show it to you if it's in here.
The budget staff report?
On the check register?
Yeah.
Okay. Check issue down the 14th.
Is this current?
Yeah.
Sandy, what?
Page three.
Page three?
That way down, 23,000.
Yeah.
Let's add the page, page four.
Page five. Heavy placement sprinkler?
Oh, that was a planned project.
And the drainage repair, I didn't know they went together.
No, 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 no. The sprinkler heads actually happened months ago. We finally just got the bill for it. But no, we didn't have a sprinkler mishap which caused drainage to have to be repaired. No, thank you.
Thank you. That's all, thank you.
That is how it usually works in my house now. All right. So having exhausted agenda item number four, we'll move on to the school choice discussion. This is actually pretty brief for tonight. The discussion is ongoing. We've started to get input from building principals. Schools were identified with our last meeting as being some of the obvious stakeholders to this. But the plan is that Superintendent and I had discussed just last night was continue to get that feedback from the principals directly, sort of combining that and then coming back to this meeting. Sort of with, with that input ready for us to make our decision about how we want to address this in, in our own policy.
So let me be another item on the budget meeting on the 12th, because we, we need, we have that. As a follow-up to last night's discussion, I did check today that we currently have no applications on file, but it usually is January anyways. But March 1st would be our deadline. We have to decide what boards wishes are going to.
I have a question on school choice. Say if a family, just say if we took like Shasburg, for instance. And if all the older siblings went to Shasburg and where she lived in Shasburg. And she has a younger kid that's going to come to school, would she have that choice going there? Or if the school is full, she has to find another place to send that child? If their, if their sibling's already been going there?
So up till last year, there was no sibling preference. And that's what was out of the discussion last year. So then the board asked us to take in additional siblings in Shasburg if they had an older sibling there, rather than make a family be broken up over two or five rooms. Remember that directly is what happened.
Yeah.
But there is no, so that's one of the things that we are asking as administrators, the board to decide. One, whether you want to continue with school choice. Two, if you do, do you want to formalize sibling preference? And what do you want to do if you say, yes, I have sibling preference, but I tell them there's no opening in the grade level, right? So, you know, but how far over class size do we go? So that, that's what the chair was referring to, that we have to have that discussion so we know what we're going to do before March 1st.
Can we get a, do you just run a report of how many students are school choice at other schools?
Yeah, we, yeah, we would, no, but that, yeah. I gave you that last year at that time, but I could do an update for that meeting.
And in that policy, does that also have some, or, sorry? In those thoughts are, is there also, how do we determine what the tuition in would be?
There is no tuition because it's all one school district now, so it's.
I was thinking when they come up together.
No, they don't. We don't do that. So it should say intraschool choice. This is school choice that you live within one of the school attendance zones in the, in the, in the Union Elementary School District, but you do not want to go to your home school. That's, that's the school choice we're talking about.
And that's when they would have to supply their own transportation, right?
Correct.
But if a school is full and say if a sibling can't go there, then what happens with transportation?
Well, and that's all part of what we need to, need to figure out. And, and part of what I do want to see, even though there's no policy currently, I think what we need to do is, Scott's all, instead of formalizing policies that way.
Or formalize procedure that vote, that the board votes on, right?
Well, which I would like to see in the body of a policy, yeah. Because what I, part of what I'd like to do is to have Dina take, to have our lawyer take a look at it to make sure legally it's sound, as well as education.
But I just know one policy takes, we won't have a policy by March 1st, so.
Even though it's just this board's policy, we don't need to circulate it in the way that we.
All policies go through the ESU, so that, that's the policy committee. You don't have your own separate policy meeting. You can have a separate provision in there. But we could check with Dina to see if, would other boards have to vote on a policy that, I'm not aware of a step aside from making the rounds of warning and adopting by all boards. If something's a policy.
So here's why I raise that, because I remember a thousand years ago when the BSD was a thing, we had, the BSD adopted its own animals in the classroom policy that we were able to do strictly as a BSD, as the, as the Bennington Board.
And, and just like in current policy, there is one that only applies to Bennington is the attendance zones, which doesn't exist.
Understood, okay.
There certainly, there certainly can be policies that specify to one school, but we haven't challenged, challenged, met, had this challenge since we've unified, can, if can.
Gotcha. Okay. My misunderstanding.
But you certainly can vote, you know, a practice and a procedure, and then maybe get it into a policy at a later date. But I, you know, I say March 1st, but we're going to start getting applications, I imagine, after the first year, so.
Okay.
So isn't the family that originally was concerned, the one that you're referring to, aren't they out of the district?
There, there's intraschool choice, I think we had to talk about, and the other one is tuitioning. Which are, so there's two different.
So are both of those something that will be shared, or?
We currently do not have tuition students other than North Bennington.
Searstur? Searstur.
Men, Searstur, yeah.
Searstur.
Maybe, I don't know if we have anyone from Sandgate, but the university of the elementary, but yeah.
Let me answer your question, Sandy. This was just strictly for the interest, intraschool choice. Yeah. We're within, within the.
And there are things that, the practice that I've been doing is, I don't take a tuition student until we had placed our in-district students first.
Yeah.
So, but again, I've been challenged on that by like, with some ways, where does it say that in writing? Right? It does, that's just the practice that I've, that I've been doing as superintendent is I will not let a student from North Bennington go into Shasburg Elementary School on a tuition basis if there are students on a waiting list from within the district.
Sandy's, Sandy's point comes in, I believe, is the people who, the, the family who we had this all brought up with was a North Bennington family.
Yeah.
So it was a, one of them, one of them.
Like living abroad.
And that was a different policy than, or that was a, we had a different stance than we would have if it was the normal intraschool. And I think to Sandy's point, part of this conversation needs to be both instances. And if it's a simple, this board does not want to have intraschool choice or, or tuition in choice any longer, we will grandfather in the families that already have a student at a place just to let them move through the system, then that could be it. It could be, we want to, we want to open it up to all. It could be, we, we, hard stop, we're done with it completely.
Right.
And that's the conversation that.
And Scott, I think it's exactly what we have to do, because it's, it's just, when there wasn't demand, it wasn't really an issue, but then when we exceeded demand.
Well, and I would also say that we have to have a, we have to have a conversation and a understanding as a board, the, anytime a student moves, for whatever reason, out of their, out of their, their building and into another building, that, that too happens. And we as a board aren't, aren't aware of it, and that can create some things for being one building having too many, or one building built to max, and another, what, you know, the sending buildings versus the receiving buildings. And I really think that that too needs to be part of the, the conversation if we're going to be talking about it.
Because prior to merger, if what you said happened, like someone lived in Powell and moved to Bennington, depending on where it was in the school year. It was later in the school year, we allowed them to finish out the year, but they had to register in the other school. When school, intraschool choice happened and now, and, and we merged, so the money is one pool and it doesn't matter who's getting billed for the student and who isn't. If somebody moved and they requested to stay, we have been classifying them as intraschool choice and letting them stay. Again, there's no procedure, it's, was more what, when I say me, I mean, our administrative meeting felt was, and we'd always get input from the principal too. What is fair, sensibly, so they've been staying. But the board could say, you don't want that to happen either, that if you, you have to go through the school choice. But, I mean, I try to think of it in the perspective of the student. And if they don't have to change schools, then we try not to let them change. Are they in the fifth grade? Are they entering, right, but then how many siblings are coming up? And then it does invite, oh, complicating it for a, a long conversation somewhere else, but there are so, I don't know, we will hit every variable that's.
Probably not.
Probably, yeah, probably not.
In consistency, if the middle school and high school have a policy, which I believe they do, I think that we should also have a policy.
I think that's tuition in policy.
Yes.
From non. ESU disresistibility.
Yeah, there are lots of elements.
Yeah, I mean, the high school also has a school, a state school choice program.
That's high school to high school.
High school, high school. And we have that going on with Arlington and Non-Antony, up to 10 seats that, without any money changing hands.
But you can't go to private school. So that's the difference. Because if you're in Sandgate, you're tuitioning a VBA, Arlington, or I mean, that's their choice, that's tuitioning students.
We did the non-operating.
Non-operating.
So, portico. That's exciting. So agenda item six is an SBSU report. So this was an agenda item, this was a longstanding agenda item that fell off at some point and sort of. sort of, I don't think was any about, on any of our radar, but I do think it's helpful for this board to hear from our SVSU reps what's going on. Unless there is an SVSU rep that feels really strongly about doing a report out tonight, we'll pass on this for right now, but we'll incorporate this as a regular agenda item. So, once, going twice, going three times, excellent. So that brings us to agenda item seven. We have one to warn and one to adopt. The, the one to adopt is agenda item five zero eight four, which we discussed two months ago, the personal use of wireless communication. So as long as there are no concerns about that, I've been, I've had a motion to adopt that as published with this.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Susan. Thank you, Mike. So a first and a second. Any discussion on adopting fifty eight four, five zero eight four, I should say? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Opposed, exceptions, the votes passed. We've already removed the dress code conversation from the agenda, just a reminder though on that, that if folks have, there are some folks who had questions last month, if you could please just send me your, your proposed changes, language changes to that, that I can then share with the policy committee. And then we need to warn the concussion management draft policy, which is five one two zero, that was, that was attached to our agenda packet. Any, just, any questions about that before we move to warrants? So if you had a chance to take a look at it. Okay, although I would then accept a motion to warn draft policy five one two zero, please.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Susan. Thank you, Scott. First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Yep. You know, and the end here says return the learn, return the play, it'd be clear, but it doesn't say if there's a concussion screening. Who would do that?
But who can clear?
Yeah, is that your question?
Oh, yeah, I know who can clear, but who would assess whether or not they need to be reassessed by healthcare association?
Are you looking at page two, kind of lines eleven through nineteen?
Yeah, that's a return to play, but there's nothing from the time to hit your head to return.
Well, this is, I don't have that answer, but this is warning, so we could ask for clarification.
Because they say how to get concussion, and they say why you might need it, but there's nothing about who's in the initial screen, which is typically in sports, it'd be the coach.
So that is sitting in the isolation of this meeting, I can't answer this, I don't know where this language came from, but happy to take it back to next, as I said, this is warning, whereas we're not adopting it. So I would ask that you warn it and we take the question back. And if you don't get a proper answer back from, from the policy, maybe representatives to ask it when, when it comes on again for adopt it, then hold it up then, so we don't hold the process.
So we have our first, a second, any other questions or conversation about this? So all those in favor, warning draft policy five one two zero, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed, exceptions? Okay, that passes as well. That brings us to the.
There were three nomination forms for the school safety officers. The, two of them have begun their training, shadowing the school safety officers at Bluefield High School. They will begin their primary school tours later this week. And the third safety officer comes on board, I believe, next week. SVSU Safety Corps, Vic Lonnie, has been handling their training and their assignment of duties and reviewing those assignment and duties and what training will need to happen for each safety officer. So, once they're fully on board, I would like to ask them to come to a meeting and be introduced to the board. The, what I didn't do as part of the discussion, I have, this is what the application, current application for the intraschool choice looks like. So I bought copies, you go onto our website and see that. This is it, that's all that's on our website. So continuing school choice, it is maybe a procedure that would be a tap, would go with that, that's what that's lacking.
Parents have an opportunity to get these forms by school if they don't have a computer?
That one? I don't know. They can request one from my office and Amy will send them.
Can we send a notice to?
It doesn't go through the school at all, it goes through the superintendent's office.
So it would have to be an announcement?
She is also the registrar, so all registrations come to the superintendent's office, not handled at the school. They can send it to a school and, and get, but it's.
I just want to make sure all the families are aware of that, they don't have to be adopted themselves.
Like how is it?
How is it kind of every single parent, whoever, they can ask for the work, it should be stated.
I think, I think that the option, I think it's on, I'm pretty sure it's on the website.
It is on the website.
Was if somebody doesn't have electronic access.
Because we have to make it applicable to all of our students.
No.
They know, do you set a form, form, form anyway, I think that's a way to do that as well.
Is it, do we know offhand if it's noted in the student handbook that goes out ever?
I don't.
Okay, okay, okay.
We have to address that.
Well, it's a good thing we're going to have a conversation about this.
Yeah. Cover every contingency. But I mean, we, we face that with like our newsletters, we know that not everybody gets it electronically, so we also have a podcast that's there every month for it and we also print paper copies and have those for distribution and everybody can request a paper copy too, Your chair and I were at negotiations last night. It's the second meeting that we have had, and we will be meeting again in two weeks. Hopefully, I, I still remain optimistic that we will get something settled before budget season concludes so that we can have realistic numbers to put in the budget. There are, there are a lot of impactors on our budget this year, besides negotiations, and I've said to you also, the positions that are in, and the additional positions that every principal, every one of your principals has requested for their schools. And you'll see that when we get to budget season, plus the pressures on the SU budget that will affect assessment. So I, I have my concern, a sixteen percent increase in health insurance costs, so I, and, I know I promised we weren't going to talk about, but the, the one twenty webinar on the funding changes, I don't know, one twenty seven, I'm not convinced, you know, it's going to shift how funding is, the ed fund funding is distributed, is today, and I'm not convinced, and I don't know if Renee is either, you know, where we're going to follow, where all of our committees are going to fall on, are they paying more or paying less and, yeah. We, we did get a report that some of your schools are going to receive additional funding to help them meet goals that they're not meeting. That would be Powell, Molly Stark and Bennington Elementary Schools. So we just received that amount today, it, it'll be spread over three years for additional incentives. Once we know more of what that's like, we have a, the twenty eighth on with the state to what the, what the parameters are of that, but they did announce that, you know, it, it's tied to their performance as schools, so additional funding to help them raise the bar. So those are the three schools that have been identified within our Union Elementary Oh, so the NESDEX study, and, you know, I want to address what you said. I don't think they're going to talk to you, I don't think they're going to talk to the board. When I asked them about it, they said they are actual based, they, they, they're using, they're talking to town officials, they're talking to realtors, they're, they're looking at their, looking at building plans for capacity numbers, and they're going to give us back the report. As they said, that report should then generate the discussion with community members and with boards, but that, they don't want a report that is influenced by one group over another, that, what their preferences and what they would like to see, and that, that includes administration too. So they are currently meeting, have been meeting with Holly Anderson to, she has sent them all the building blueprints. And for building use and is there potential use or otherwise? So then the next round is scheduled with the building, each principal is given a form to fill out, but I, I actually sent it to Holly because I think she knew the answers better about the physical limits of the building, but now there's a meeting coming, and these are all by Zoom, with the principal, Holly and NESDEX. Everyone can look at the blueprints and the principal is telling them what is that room being used for. So, and they'll create that inventory. But as far as like holding a community forum and getting input from the community about what they want to see at their schools, they're saying that's our role, have to use this report as, as a tool, they, they won't, they won't make specific recommendations that way, they're going to tell us what our, they'll give us some options, but they'll give us, you know, we will have an inventory of what our buildings are, what their square footage is, what's their capacity, can they be used for something different? Should we do it for something different? So it was a bit of a surprise for me also, but I can see their rationale for why they don't want their report influenced, but they said we could talk about that, but that, when they say it that way, I'm expecting that that might cost additional money too. So, I'm sorry.
Consultation fees.
Yeah, yeah, so, still saying March, you know, before we should, we should see a report, they have a November fifteenth deadline for the blueprints. And I know that they've talked to the town of Bennington and I believe Shasburg, but I could be wrong, it would be Powell, I don't have the email in front of me. And it also, they want, they're looking at population studies to see what, will we see a surge, are we going to see a decrease in enrollment? Talking to realtors on housing stock availability, but I think we already, we probably could write that ourselves without, you know, helping realtors, so that's what I have.
Two questions. First, go back to that grant, is that a grant from the state for Powell, Benel and Marley?
Yes.
Okay, and then in that you shared the word incentives, and I, I was just hoping you could clarify what that means.
Incentive to, I'm, I'm not, listen, I'm going to get the email up so that.
It sounds like they were identified due to performance issues.
Yes.
They were more wanted to improve what are the kids actually doing?
Well, in the incentive, are they, what does that?
It's comprehensive, it's the education quality comprehensive support. It's, the middle school is also part of this, the middle school, Molly Stark, Powell Elementary, are the three that are in your jurisdiction. The allocation for school improvement funds for Powell Elementary will be a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for Molly Stark, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and Union Elementary, two hundred thousand. So we have been invited to a training on November twenty eighth to enter the school improvement fund investments and into GMS, which is our grant management system. So we do not have the, the invite to that training, like I said, this just came today. We were aware that the schools are on the list two weeks ago. We had a, we had a meeting with the Secretary of Education to, by Zoom, to let us know that these school.
One question, for the middle school dollars, is that for sixth grade in middle school or is that?
Uh, no, I believe it's middle, in the middle school, it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so I imagine that's all grades, that's their dollar. Yeah, because it's, it's the middle school, remember, they, this is the SU, this email's addressing the SU, but the three schools in the Union Elementary and that's, they said the MAU, you know, that there's Bennington's sixth graders, but they are considered MAU students.
Is there something, is it that they're hoping that the growth has increased?
I'll be happy to tell you more after this webinar on the twenty eighth, right?
Thank you, okay. Then the second question I had, I, I wasn't able to find the mission on the website and I don't know if I just couldn't find it or if maybe, I don't know, it's just not on there. The mission of our.
Mission statement.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if it is not, I, I know you, I think that I'm on our website every day, but I am for specific things, not sure of that, but I will look, if it's not there, I can speak to our public information board there.
Thank you. And the last thing, principals report?
Yeah, we do not have a principal present. So, and in part because we, our executive session at eleven may be lengthy, so to keep, to be respectful of everyone's time. Yeah. Anything else first, superintendent? Okay, thank you. He's going to depart, but we're going to get HR director, Nick Galt, to help us with our final agenda item. So this brings us to our chair's report. I just want to say a few additional words about the negotiation, negotiations that have been happening so far. So far, been very amicable, you know, very positive. The, there is a, a joint negotiation happening, it's, it's teachers and support staff negotiating as one body, even though there are two contracts, they're negotiating as one body. As the superintendent said, this is our second meeting. The approach that the, that the boards have taken is to not engage in a, in a strategy that has been used in the past, that I particularly find distasteful, which is the idea of just lowballing and lowballing and lowballing. I think one thing that this particular board has been very good about is recognizing and respecting the value of our teachers and folks who are in the buildings and, and what they do is critical. And so, part of that, that value is carried into these negotiations as well, where what we presented was like, this is the real number, this is what we can do. I think what we're at, at this point, that's going to generate most discussion are just contractual language requests. All this is public, I believe CAT TV was, was there last night, folks can tune in if they, if they so wish, but again, very hopeful that, that we're going to be able to find a resolution that is pleasing to just about everybody. It'll be impossible to find one that's pleasing to everybody, every stakeholder out there, but I'm feeling very confident about it. So, with that, that exhausts the chair's report. Agenda item ten is the board's status report, FYI. And that brings us to number eleven. Superintendent Culkin, before you go, I'm sorry, is, do, are we, will we need to come back and take action?
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, yes. Okay. So, so to that end. Spent his name on closed caption, that's fine. So to that end, CAT TV may wish to stick around. Richard, if you would like to split, you may, certainly, I'll leave that to your discretion. I mean, I know, here's, you're already gone right now, great, so I don't need to vamp So I would entertain a motion, please, to enter into executive session pursuant to one VSA subsection three thirteen. We'll call it Scott, we'll call it Susan. Any discussion about entering into executive session? Hearing none, all those in favor for entering into executive session for the stated reasons, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.